Good afternoon. It's 3:33. I'll call the Lubbock City Council to order. We're in a specially called meeting today is Tuesday, the 7th of September, 2021. We will immediately go into executive session. Following that, we have a regular meeting tonight focused largely on our budget. Today, the city council will hold an executive session for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding personnel matters under section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. It's 3:34. Public City Council is possessed to executive session. Good afternoon. It's 5:24. The Lubbock City Council has returned from executive session. I'll call our special meeting of the council to order. It is 5:24. Today is September 7th, 2021. The bulk of our actions tonight are related to the 2021-2022 Operating Budget and Capital Program. We will have public hearings on both the budget and the rate momentarily. However, before doing so, I think it's appropriate that we ask staff to give us another high-level overview of this proposed budget. Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, as I've told one or two of y'all, hopefully this is the next of the last time that you have to hear my budget presentation for this fiscal year. With that, we're going to jump right in. We have condensed the presentation. If there are any questions or comments, please, we'll be able to go back and get you into the detail. To begin with, we'll go ahead and start with the property tax. Council, the items you see before you, those four bullet points, those are constant. We've seen those since we started. The only difference is in the fourth bullet point, the total reduction in the tax rate is 1.83 cents, and we had a slightly smaller reduction than that when we first started. What you can see is you look across the bottom of the chart in the middle of the page. For fiscal year 1920, the city's total tax rate was 55.8 pennies. For fiscal year 21, this is the year we are in now, the total tax rate, 54.1573. The proposed tax rate, the tax rate that funds the budget you have in front of you and that you will consider tonight, is 52.3230 cents. And then to the right, you see that change being the 1.83 cents or pennies. We'll go into the required statutory language in a moment. Would like to highlight on the bottom, the sales tax. The fiscal year 21, current fiscal year, is forecasted to end the year with collections $6 million or roughly 8.1% year-over-year growth. So recall that the prior year, the so-called pandemic year, we had put in place aggressive measures, sales tax had dipped, but ultimately, we actually ended the year statistically flat to budget. So this 6 million or the 8.1% is over the prior year's flat budget. It's very good. We've brought the budget forward at about 1.1%, just under $1 million over our forecasted. So we're going back to that plus six that you see in the line item above. Sales tax is truly what's making your proposed general fund budget work this year. Talk about a few rate changes. These are your primary fee for service operations. Stormwater, there is no change proposed to the rate. For the water system, we are proposing 50 cent increase in the base rate. That's for the three-quarter inch meter, the small meter, it pro-rates as you go up. Council note that there is no associated change to volume. This is strictly for the base rate, and the last time that this rate was changed was for fiscal year 1718, so it's been a while. Wastewater has a 5 cent or a 1 nickel increase proposed to the base rate, no volume, base rate only. Again, that's on the three-quarter inch meter, so it pro-rates as you go up to your larger and larger meters. Last change for that was fiscal year 1819. Solid waste collection, this is our normal residential collection, 50 cents on the residential rate, commercial would prorate off that. This rate was last changed in fiscal year 1819. For the landfill, and would note that this is only for customers coming directly to the landfill. These are primarily either commercial haulers or what's being brought in from cities around us. There is an increase of 50 cents, and that would be 50 cents per ton, in what's called the tipping fee. So this is the solid waste coming across the scales. Same for the special waste category. Those did change last year. We've tried to do that to honor the cost it takes to keep that landfill going. Council below, you see a list of the staff that we propose to add in this budget. If you were to add that up, those are 30 individuals. We have 11 that are actually coming off, so our net change to the overall staffing of the city is plus 19, plus 19. Very pleased, as we jump into some of the highlighted capital, your street maintenance program this year has moved up to $11 million. That is $11 million in cash, so that has long been a goal of this council, and now in a few short budget years, you've moved that quite significantly, and you've done it all with cash funding. Moving down, we've got $89.8 million proposed in capital improvements, 74 total projects, 93% of which will be cash funded. We've listed out five projects that we do propose for debt financing, Public Safety CAD or CAD, that is the computer-aided dispatch system for both police and fire. The one we have is aging out. It's time to move into the next. We have 114th Street, Quaker to Indiana at $3 million. Council, please note that $3 million is actually the matching funds that go against dollars that the Metropolitan Planning Organization is committing to that project. So it will be a complete and total rebuild and fix of that. This becomes our match or our piece of it. We are proposing one vehicle that would be debt-funded, and that is one single machine that's used at the landfill that costs $1.1 million for that one machine. Pump Station 2 improvements at $6 million, that's in your wastewater system, and the South Lubbock Sanitary Sewer Expansion at 2.2, that also is in the wastewater system. We have proposed $14 million in the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funding for FY22. The first and the largest is finishing the public health facility, the new public health facility, at 8.1. Three of the heavy vehicles for the fire department, 3.1, and 52 vehicles for police at 2.8. That is all that is proposed out of ARPA in this coming budget. Getting on here, 102 vehicles, 99% are cash-funded, the one we talked about on the prior page being the compactor. Council, we're pleased with the actions you took earlier this summer. You have no master lease takeouts left. That program is done and over with. So we finished the fifth year of that, and we're done. We no longer have it. Looking through here, these are your summary of your funding sources. The next slide will be the summary of expense. If you'd like, I'll just take you to the blue, the dark blue bar across the bottom. So the total of all funding sources for the proposed budget year 2021-2022 is $946 million. It's a 1.8% change from our forecasted budget we're in today, or roughly $16.5 million. The next slide is the uses, so this is the expense side that matches the revenue. I do want to point out on your internal service funds, since you last saw this a few weeks ago, we have received the latest round of our quotes on our property and casualty, property and risk insurance. Those totals are greater than the cushion we had built into the budget. So internal services has been adjusted up by roughly $444,000. That breaks down to an additional charge for property insurance of $335,000, and on your liability, your risk, $109,000, again, making the 444. Would note, when we look at the property schedule, there was tremendous value added to your property schedule this year, approximately $245.8 million. Of that, $118 million alone is the transmission lines related to the ERCOT connection. So pretty significant increase there, and that is the change you see. It does not affect rates, it does not affect the tax rate, any of that, but wanted to note it. So again, jumping down to the bottom line here, your total expense summary, just a little under $944 million, 1.5% increase, just under a $14 million increase over the forecast. There is a slight delta between those two. That delta is dollars programmed to go to reserve, primarily in your enterprise funds. The other thing you might note that appears a little unusual, for example, if you look at airport, you see that it's down by nearly 17%. We're not reducing operations at the airport. That is the impact of some prior federal grants that came through as part of the pandemic that have paid off or rolled out. We do have two slides to talk about compensation adjustments. The first is for civil service inside your Lubbock Police Department. These are your officers. This comes up to an average of 10.27% increase. It's broken up differently. We've also put some compression into the step plans to try to help officers advance within an individual rank structure quicker. This ranges from approximately a 16.6% increase to as low as a 4% increase, again, with the biggest part of it shifted towards the bottom. And I think this puts us in really good stead as it relates to West Texas. I will tell you, I'm already beginning to see stuff from around us that this will not be the last thing we have to do, but it puts you in a really good place for now. For the non-civil service employees, we have what's called a 4% average raise. Council note, though, that this raise is flipped upside down. So for those in the lower pay grades of the city, it's as much as a 7%. As you step up to the pay grades, the smallest group, which are really going to be some of your senior staff, it comes out to a 3.25% increase. However, the entirety of your fire department civil service, your actual firefighters, it is a flat 4% for that. You can't do tiers within it. I'll now pause and read our state required language. This budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by $4,144,000, or 4.23%. And of that amount, $2,195,284 is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the roll this year. I'll go through the rates and then offer a comment or two. For tax year 2021, which is what funds your '22 budget, our no-new revenue rate, which is very similar to what we used to call the effective rate, the no-new revenue rate would be 49.7710 cents. What is called the voter approval tax rate, so this is the 3.5% over the no-new revenue, is 52.3230. Lubbock has accumulated what is called an unused increment, so this is any year that the tax rate is less than 3.5. Whatever amount is less, you hold on to that, and you can carry it forward for three-year rolls, and you could apply it actually above your voter approval tax rate. What it would do is adjust the voter approval rate upward. We have .3632 cents of unused increment, and thus, if we added that to the voter approval rate, your max was actually 52.6862. Your proposed rate's the 52.3230. So a couple of comments. You see on the bottom of the page, the net taxable value of the city of Lubbock rose by $1.42 billion year-over-year. If you'll recall, last year, we kind of had a dip that was a bit unexpected. I think you've seen that true itself up, and I think you're seeing just the incredible growth that's going on in our community. So that's incredible. Final comment on this, if you go back up to the top, we're increasing the property tax revenue by 4.1 million, but of that, roughly 2.2 is new property. Just a little over half of that total increase is not coming from existing taxpayers. It's coming from new property, new investment that's come on the tax roll. Here's the division of the 4.1 million. Recall that your tax rate is actually three separate pieces that add up to what we call the tax rate. The general fund, or what we call the MNO, Maintenance and Operation, the increased portion is 2.987 million, and down below it, you can see the portion of that that comes from existing property versus what comes from new property. Again, slightly more than half of it new. Your middle piece is economic development, $170,097, and down below, you see the part that comes from existing property versus new property. The final component of your tax rate is the INS or Interest in Sinking, which funds your debt payments, debt payments that are within the general fund, and you see below the two components of that. Probably on a more illustrative way to do this, let's note that for the year we're currently in, the average value in Lubbock of a single-family residence is $158,468. For the new year, the Lubbock Central Appraisal District has calculated, note that the city of Lubbock has nothing to do with the value calculations. Lubbock Central Appraisal District has told us that the average single-family home in Lubbock has gone up a little over $10,000 to $168,814. Down below, within our current year, you see that that average home, home valued at $158,000, would have paid $858.22 to the city of Lubbock. We structured our tax rate such in that last budget that basically everybody got held harmless on existing property. We've now got a value increase, we've adjusted a rate downward, so here's where it's going to go for the new year. That same average home would pay $883.29, so the net dollar increase to the average single-family home was $25.07. Appraisal growth actually would have made it $56, hence the reason the tax rate was reduced, which took out nearly $31 of that increase to get you where you are. So you have a tax rate decrease, there will still be a very slight increase in the tax paid, $25.07 for that average home. Finally, we'll close with the tax rate comparison year-over-year. This is where we know the rates and we can find them. You see Lubbock coming in fifth from the left. Current year, the blue bar, a little over 54 cents. Proposed year, the year you will consider tonight, 52.32. You see two of these that are outlined in red, and that is because the rate has actually gone up. So Amarillo is the first example. Their current tax rate's 39.68 cents. Their proposed rate is 48.4 cents. So this is your example of where they have actually exceeded the voter approval tax rate. So that tax rate, proposed tax rate of 48.4 cents, is actually on the November ballot in November. Denton, they are proposing a rate that is 1 cent roughly higher than what it was. I'm not sure at the moment if that one also is going to the voters or not, but we'll look that one up. Council, with that, I'll conclude a semi-brief overview. Take any questions you may have before your hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Council, before we have the hearings, any questions? Okay. So we will now hear a public hearing on the proposed FY2021-2022 Operating Budget and Capital Program. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? If so, please come forward.
Good evening, Council.
Evening, Mr. Hernandez.
For the record, my name is Adam Hernandez, currently living in the 7400 Block of Avenue X, and I'm the Communications Chair on the Board of Lubbock Compact. So I didn't see it up there, but I think you guys are considering having a fiscal impact analysis in this budget, or y'all were considering that. This is something that we're very much in favor of, and I know we talked a lot about this in the last budget session last year, but basically, it's about stewardship of our financial resources or how we use our land and our money. This not only determines if our city will grow in a healthy way, but it also determines if the city will stand the test of time. Is it going to be sustainable? Because of the importance of this data, we feel that we should be very intentional with this process, and so we've looked at some different firms that do fiscal impact analysis. We've researched this and talked to a lot of different folks on this, and so they're our best practices as they are with anything. And so one of those things is, when you pay for analysis such as this, it should factor in maintenance and infrastructure costs. A lot of times, firms do this, and they don't factor those things in, and it's very short-sighted. That's pretty straightforward, doesn't need too much of an explanation. The other thing is appraised value versus revenue per acre on a lot-by-lot basis. So firms, a lot of times, will use appraised value, which, you know, they use appraised or assessed value data, and it's a form of a fiscal impact analysis, but it's not very comprehensive, and it doesn't really give us a story of what's going on in the city as a whole. It gives you a lot of useful information about private development efforts, but it doesn't give us a lot of information about the city as a whole. And so in this, in the, in this scenario, bigger lots tend to have the highest value, right? In comparison, a revenue-per-acre model uses property tax value or levy data. And so we can learn more by using levy data, which excludes tax-exempt properties, reflects the impacts of the city's tax rate, and accounts for various property tax caps and exemptions. So you get a lot of more information there. Revenue-per-acre uses the levy amount divided by the size of the parcel rather than the total value per lot, which is better for long-range financial planning. This more accurately reflects the true fiscal contribution of various development patterns because the per-acre assessment doesn't care about overall lot size. And what that means is, a lot of times, larger lots generally do not translate to higher revenue on a per-acre basis. So things can look very different when you focus on how efficient the land is being used. And so why is this all important? Because we should make sure that we are getting the most value for our money when we do an analysis like this, and that we're setting our city up for prosperity and sustainability. So another way to think about this is that we would be finding out our return on investment of taxpayer dollars while ensuring the city's land is being used in the most efficient ways possible. And the $100,000 that was proposed, again, I'm not sure if y'all have taken this line item off, but the $100,000 that was proposed is plenty to get us a comprehensive analysis of this sort, and so if you guys need more information on this, we're happy to send that over to you as you consider that, but we do urge you all to put that in this year's budget so that we can start getting our city on a little bit better track. And that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Other speakers?
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Joshua Shankles, and I live in the 2600 Block, 47th Street. I'm coming before you to advocate for something that I've come before you to advocate for before, which is for the city to allot the proper budget amount to rejoin the Arbor Day Foundation's Tree City USA program. We used to be members of this program. We are the only metro area in Texas who are currently not in the program because we have not budgeted the money to be a member of the program. As you, just for clarification, the budget requirement to be involved in this program is $2 per capita invested in urban forestry, its expansion, and its maintenance. Our tree canopy is not in terribly great condition in Lubbock. 2020 was very hard on Lubbock's trees in general. We can still see the evidence of that. Anywhere you drive in town, you see dead and dying and sick trees. That's a, you know, terrible thing to have happen in a very, very hot city and one that will undoubtedly get hotter. The negative environmental impacts of this increased heat and all the effects that we're seeing from our climate will have further budgetary implications as we have to replace buckling roads and infrastructure that is not capable of keeping up with that, and having our utility workers off the street because our heat is too intense. So I would remind the council that a wise investment now will preclude us from having to make investments in these areas in the future and will be fiscally responsible. I see a lot of disease progress going on in our tree canopy, especially in the elm species across our town, which constitute a great percentage of the tree canopy of our city, and so before it's too late, we need to begin investing in replacing that. I would also call attention to the flooding events that we've seen happen in our city, in this very building, in our utility, in some notorious roadways, and a robust tree canopy is very useful in mitigating the effects of extreme water events like we've seen in this year. So I would encourage the council to add this very responsible investment to the budget so that we can start to head off some of these environmental issues before we even get there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Shankles. Good evening, Ms. Ward.
Michael Ward, 5417 8th Street. I was going to go over all of the good things that had been happening, but I think Jared pretty much covered all of those, so I'll talk about some other parts and pieces that I do regularly, I guess, but our population size is such that we have a real synergy going to continue to grow, and I think we're finding that infrastructure can't really keep up with the growth that we have without adding more taxes and more indebtedness and so forth, and we really don't need to continue to bribe businesses to come here. Even the 2040 CPAC plan had some other parts and pieces, and for those of you that haven't heard my history on all of this, the Market Lubbock part, the economic development part, was in the charter until January of 1992, and 84% of the voters voted that completely out of the charter and its appropriations by 84%. At that time, the appropriations were about 3 cents, and through probably 2013 to 15, under another mayor, we started lowering that property tax amount to where it's down now to, I guess, the 2.3, I thought it was 2.25, but a little more than that. But basically, that money can be used anytime for anything. It has no basis as far as voter approval, or in fact, it was much disapproval of open-ended economic development. But what I'm finding more and more is that the, most of the focus, both Market Lubbock and Lita both, are pretty much on downtown projects, and there's another couple of sources for revenue there, as well as the business park. TIF grows, there's about $635,000 in the property tax that's available for that, as well as the CBD TIF has about a million and a half, making 2.2 million more. Last year, between Market Lubbock and Lita, they had budgeted, I don't know that it was all spent, but something basically of over $35 million between the two of them, 35.4 to be exact, and some of that was, of course, the remodeling of the old City Hall for South Plains College and soccer fields and other things, but a lot of it, too, has been... things. But, uh, a lot of it too has been, um, going surprisingly even to me, and I keep up with it fairly well, to outside consultants. And I got, I, it's not accurate completely because there's a lot of these contracts with these outside consultants have, uh, additional reimbursement for travel and lodging and food and so forth added. But almost all of those are also focused on downtown. Uh, basically, uh, out of almost $5 million in the last three years spent on outside consultants, all but about, oh, a million two, uh, which would include, uh, the CPAC 2040 plan, the, uh, new parks analysis, and the Universal Development Code. Nearly all of the rest of them are to do with downtown, even the, either the Civic Center expansion, the parking master plan for downtown, uh, the Civic Park, which is already had about 225.7,000 dollars put into it. And if I might suggest a better location would be, uh, where the, uh, old police station is, which is probably going to be demolished anyway. I understand that that, uh, other property that we're looking at, 65,000 square feet and a nice parking garage, would be much better used to get it back on the tax rolls and create more revenue in the CBD TIF, uh, to spend. So, much of downtown is not really, uh, taxable to start with, so it's a little hard to build up that, uh, CBD, uh, funding and all. But I think those are important things to, uh, keep up with. I'm also concerned about the debt. I know we're paying some down, but we're also adding quite a bit. Um, and, by the way, Blue Costakle has been very helpful to get me good information so I can speak as factually as possible. So, I always appreciate that. And the, I got the new debt service schedule and kind of a breakdown of how many years each one of these is before it, uh, goes to maturity. But, uh, right now with interest, uh, the total that we, uh, have before the bond election in November, it does include the, the recent COs for the, uh, few projects that were put on there, as well in the general fund, uh, some paving and, uh, new fire station. But, uh, the total with interest on the, all of that, uh, to maturity is a mi- a billion, 800,000, a little more. And, uh, that's concerning and some of them are out now to 2050, so I'll be long, long gone from the planet by then, but, uh, I'm, I'm still concerned about it. And, uh, so I just wanted to, uh, mention some of these things because, um, I followed a long time all of these outside consultants. And maybe I just sort of resent them coming in and, uh, telling us what to do and, and then leaving. And usually, the price tag is not even, uh, mentioned, uh, in the, uh, original thing. It's like just dream big dreams and, uh, all of that will, uh, work out. But, uh, I'll wait and, and comment a little bit about the, uh, the utility taxes and all on the tax part. But, uh, just consider these things because I think we can, pretty much, we have our own talent base here. And the public, uh, kind of knows what they would like to have. And it's hard to imagine that we're spending, uh, in the last, I guess, three or four years, uh, some of that. Uh, but, uh, and, uh, what I was counting was not including, uh, the master developer contract. It's a little hard to follow because it changes a lot. But, uh, I was, I was mostly looking at the ones where we're hiring people from out of town. So, uh, if we can do some things in-house, I think that frees up a, a lot of money for important things that we really need. But, uh, just consider that because, uh, it would be, uh, really helpful to the, the whole public to have, uh, less spent on the economic development end. Uh, the, I think what's, uh, looked at, and of course, we estimate the sales tax part, but that eight cent is generating $7.3 million, which is an increase of about 545,000. So, uh, it, together with the economic development tax of four million, is, uh, 16.6 million. And, uh, I think that's pretty high. I think they, uh, used a lot of, uh, some reserves last year. But, uh, we really just don't need to spend that kind of money on, uh, bringing people here. And, uh, I often quote, Alan Greenspan said it one time, that the best way to grow the economy is to leave more money in people's pockets, which increases the need for more goods and services. And, uh, basically, uh, makes the world go around. So, the, the less you can extract for taxes and other things that don't necessarily benefit everybody, uh, the better for, uh, basically our growth. And you'll get your money back and, but more taxes being paid and more money being spent with the businesses here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Other speakers? Anyone else? Okay. We'll move to item 22. It's a public hearing also. It's also from our finance department. I'll read the, uh, language on this real quick. Counsel will now hold a public hearing, uh, on a proposal to increase total tax revenues from properties on the tax roll in the preceding year by 5.13%. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at this hearing? Please come forward. Should've stayed.
Here again, I won't take much time, but, uh, one of the things that, uh, I guess concerns me the most, and, uh, I would like for us to go to a no-new-revenue, uh, rate, of course, but, uh, there again, it would, uh, create more, uh, revenue coming in, if any, uh, oh, this is just a solid thing that always happens. But, uh, uh, the, the part that I wanted to comment on, and I didn't while ago, is, uh, on the utilities. And, uh, of course, there's minimal increase in the monthly charges. But overall, the franchise fees, uh, between LPNL, the water, wastewater, and stormwater, uh, the franchise fee alone is 21.7 million. The, uh, uh, the only one that contributes toward the gateway phone with, uh, 2% of it, or, uh, two-tenths of the 5%, whatever, is LPNL. So, there's really no reason that the others should be any more than three. But, uh, the, uh, the pilot or the property, in lieu of property taxes, is, uh, 11.2 million. So, together, it's, uh, 32.9 million dollars in taxes, not counting sales tax that's on, I think, solid waste and electric. But, uh, that's pretty substantial. And then, of course, we have additional, which is paying for, uh, services and so forth. But that's the transfers and the indirect cost of, uh, government. That's another 5.2 million. And, uh, the Citizen Tower debt, which I also got a really good chart to see the breakdown of all of that. Uh, but out of that, we're paying, um, out of our utilities. And this is over and above the amount of the utilities, uh, you know, the cost of delivering these. And hurts the people who can probably least afford it. But, uh, it's 1.8 million dollars, uh, in annual Citizen Tower debt on the utilities. And, uh, altogether, that's almost 40 million dollars of extra taxes and, uh, fees, if you will, uh, basically, uh, into the, uh, funds from the, uh, utilities. And that's almost a fifth of the general fund budget. So, it's just behind, uh, sales tax, which generates the most, of course, and, uh, property tax as well. But, uh, those are all things that are important. And people don't realize that every eighth cent right now is generating, of sales tax, is generating at least, uh, seven and a half million dollars, probably. And probably going up from that. We always do a little bit low, uh, proposal on it just in case. But, uh, I think those are all important things to consider. And, uh, with the, uh, if you would move some of the economic development in there, you could almost, uh, not have a bond election in November for the streets that need to be done. So, do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Other speakers on item 22? Okay. We'll close the public hearing on item 22. We'll go to pa- item 23. Item 23 is on page 12. Item 23 is the first reading of the ordinance that would adopt the, uh, budget and capital plan for FY 2021 and 2022. Mr. Atkinson did a good job of summarizing that budget. It is what this council has worked on now for the past, uh, publicly for the last six weeks. Uh, council, to begin discussion on item 23, uh, do we have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Chinas. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Christian. I'll open the floor for, uh, discussion, comments, uh, council. Ms. Joy.
Well, if we did what Ms. Ward suggested, this city would be in dire straits. She referenced synergy. And that synergy comes from a lot of sources. It has come from the growth of the city of Lubbock. It has come from the businesses that have not only stayed here and done well, but from the businesses that have come to the city. We continually strive to meet needs of citizens. And anyone who deals with the city of Lubbock on any even casual basis knows about all of the needs and the wants that we have. We have been very tight on our budgets. Um, I, I can't suggest to you that we just decide not to promote business growth. Can't do that. I was partners with an attorney for a number of years, a very wise man, who said, "If you're not growing, you're dying." Lubbock's very fortunate to be where we are today. Uh, we were very unfortunate last year because the whole city was affected by COVID. And it caused a lot of us to stop and rethink about where we should go and what we should do. And we shut down our budget. We had no raises for our staff or our police officers. And I understand that the rest of the city suffered likewise. And we agreed then to do our very best not to increase that burden on the citizens. This year has been equally difficult from a budgetary standpoint. Yes, we have more money generated, uh, the majority of which is generated from new growth. And yes, we have expenses that go with new growth. But if you net out how much in terms of property taxes that we receive from new growth with the debt, you'll find that it is substantial. There are areas that I would very much like to see increased in terms of what we do for the citizens of Lubbock. And I will tell you that next year, I will be looking hard at several areas. One of those will be codes because we definitely have to do something different and something better. Another area that we will be looking at are parks. And I'm not talking about the Civic Park. I'm talking about our parks, the places that people tell me all the time that is a priority for them. So, we have to keep up with our police officers and their pay. We, we took a giant step this year, but I don't think we're finished. Because in today's society, we need them more than ever. So, I guess what I'm saying to you is even though you may disagree with what we do in terms of whether it's funding LITA, Market Lubbock, having pilot fees, franchise fees, the bottom line is, in order for a city of our size and our, I say, our sophistication, people who want better, then we've done about all we can do with this, this budget. Another area, and I don't want to skip it, is animal services. Because that's another problem. We, everybody has a dog or two or three. Um, and sometimes our citizens are responsible, sometimes they're not. Sometimes it has nothing to do with their citizens. But it's an area where we need to take a hard look and do a better job. Is it essential? Depends on who you're talking to. If you're talking to the gentleman who was out walking in southwest Lubbock and was attacked by a dog, to him, it is essential. If you're talking to my constituents in north and northwest Lubbock who've been out walking and have been chased by dogs, it is essential. You know, it all comes down to, how does it affect me? But in an overall situation, the citizens of Lubbock deserve better. We can talk about the amount of debt. A lot of people want to talk about that. But let's also look at the flip side of that, is how we're paying down debt, how we've done refinancing to decrease the percentage that we're paying on old debt, and how hard we are working to bring all of that down. You don't do that overnight. You do it with concentrated effort and working together with all of the staff and taking into consideration the public view. So, for this year's budget, I will, uh, be supporting it. And I will tell you that I will continue to work on reduction of debt, just as I have since I came to this seat, uh, because I don't like debt. Personally, I don't like it at all. But whether we're 360,000 people or 400,000 people, there's a certain amount that it takes to operate this city in all parts of this city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Other comments? Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Mayor. Public safety is job one for this city council, in my opinion. Says so in the charter. It is vitally important that in this budget, that we take care of Lubbock Police Department. They are the men and women on the streets that protect us. They have a difficult job. We do have a growing city. I'm very proud of the work that has been done. I'm very proud of the work that has been done by the city manager and the CFO of the city of Lubbock and with Lubbock Police, Professional Police Association and our police administration in getting us what we need for this team. There's a lot in this budget. No doubt about it. Thank goodness for growth, so that we're able to do this. I'm very cognizant of where we stand with our sister cities on the tax rates. Irving, Carrollton, Denton, Arlington, Laredo, Corpus Christi, Fort Worth, Waco, Abilene, and El Paso. All very good Texas cities. All have a higher tax rate than we do here. No, we're not the lowest in the state. But we have worked very hard to keep our tax rate at an even keel. So I'm very proud that we're able to lower the tax rate this year. And I understand it's just an offset for some appraisal creep. It's never perfect. But I also agree that this is a very good budget, and I am in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith, for the comments. Mr. Massey.
Thanks. I'll be brief because I think Ms. Joy, Mr. Griffith, said a lot of the things I was thinking, but they also did a good job communicating. I would just echo what Mr. Griffith says. We're in a lot different situation in how fortunate we are than our neighbor to the north. To be able to meet our needs and take care of our police officers like we did and as well as our staff, and still have the ability to trim the tax rate. I think that's, I think we're very fortunate. And I think it's a testament to great work of our staff and this council for the last six weeks on this budget. So I support the, I support the tax rate and the budget today.
Thank you, Mr. Massey. Mr. Chattis.
Thank you, Mayor. I as well am in favor and support this budget. I'm looking at environmental specialist to be added. Public health, three full-time, two full-time, one full-time. And again, it's all for the public, public safety. You know, we have to keep growing. And I'm all in favor of this budget. I'll support it.
Thank you, Mr. Chattis. Mr. Christian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do support this budget as well. I think that you look at what has been proposed in regards to public safety and raising the level of pay for our police officers. I agree with Ms. Joy that we have some challenges facing ahead of us. We all talk about codes and codes enforcement and parks and animal services, and I agree with that. But one of the things that I think that we've done a good job of since I've been on the council is making Lubbock, Texas, much more attractive in so many ways because it's a place that is still livable. A place that is attractive, a place that people can, even though we have some problems in certain areas, people can feel comfortable about raising a family. And we're also continually trying to find and improve the opportunities for employment. And I think everything that we've done in that regard, regarding LITA and Market Lubbock, I think that we have, it shows that we've had a pretty good return on investment on that stuff. And I think that will continue to be the case. This is a great city. And I appreciate the staff for working on the budget and making it one that is reasonable, thoughtful, and puts money where we need to put our money in and making this a place that's better each and every year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna save my comment and just say that I appreciate all of the comments that have been given by the council members here today. I just have one quick question. And it's to one of the citizens that asked today. We did keep a placeholder for the funds in reference to what would be potentially for the comprehensive analysis. I can't recall what that was labeled as, but I just wanted to address that here today. And once that is answered, I'll just again say, I appreciate the comments by the other council members, and I concur. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. Those dollars were saved. They're still proposed in your CIP, which is project money that doesn't go away, you know, year by year. I believe we labeled it future studies, but we'll check it and come back and verify that.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Anything else, Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Along the same lines, Mr. Atkinson, I'd like, I think it'd be worth staff looking at to see if we don't qualify for the Tree City USA program already. I think it's likely we do in the budget. I was just looking at the requirements. It's a list that we want to be on. It's sort of, it's frankly, maybe an oversight that we're not there. But if you'd work on that, I think Mr. Schenckles makes an awful good point. Particularly when he talks about those Siberian elms, Russian elms, or whatever you want to call those, that grew fast and age not so gracefully. And we should be, we are replacing some in our parks. And, but I think it's just worth, let's at least look at that. Okay? Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Patterson-Harris.
I glad you mentioned that because as we work with our neighborhood planter, that would all, planter, sorry, not planter. We're gonna plant Wilson somewhere. I mean, I think it's a great opportunity to look at that for those neighborhoods, especially some of the older neighborhoods that we'll be working with early on to address some of those things that are also tree deficient and where the elm trees have planted themselves and not done a good job and not lasted well.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Mr. Atkinson, could you explain the no new tax rate to me?
The no new revenue rate, I believe is the question. The no new revenue, try that again. The no new revenue rate is a mathematical calculation that will give the city the exact same amount of money next year from the exact same piece of property that it had in the prior year. And maybe a better way to say it is the no new revenue rate is designed to completely eliminate the effect of any increase in appraisals. You still would get new property, but you only do that one year. After that, it's in the no new revenue calculation.
So if that's the case, then last year, our budget had seventy, seventy-one point nine million dollars. Let's just call it seventy-two million dollars in property tax.
Is that the MNO number?
Uh, yes.
Yep.
Operating capital, right?
Correct.
Then you would take, all that you would add to that for this year would be your growth. Property tax, new property tax, not appraisal growth.
Correct.
By the way, I don't call it a appraisal creep because when I buy something, I want it to appreciate. You know, I think that's how you buy, you buy low and you sell high. I, I just, to me, that's the way it should work. If I'm buying something that goes down in value, I go home at night and don't feel very good about myself. But that's just me. I'm a capitalist, unappachedly a capitalist. But back to my point. So last year's number would have been, we said seventy-two million. We would add the growth this year, and that would be our no new tax number, roughly right. So if I took seventy-two million and added 2.2 million, which is this year's growth, 2.195, I think you guys will give me that 50,000, okay? I would get to 74.2 million. This year's budget has 74.288.
The difference is the other two components because part of that new growth was divided also into the INS and into the economic development.
No, but I'm talking, but, okay, so it would just be the, the, okay, hold on. So then that number is, I got it right here, because of our handy dandy slides. It would be 1.6 would be that, the new property rate would be in the general fund, based upon your slide on page 11, would be 1.6, right?
Yes.
So our budget is gonna go up in property tax. It's gonna go up $600,000, roughly right.
Yes.
For the year.
Yes.
Now, 600,000 is what percent of 72 million? Anybody want to do the math on that? I'll do it for you. I've got my calculator here. So it's 00833.
Eight tenths of 1%.
So why do we have to read something that talks about going up 5.13%? I mean, games are being played with us. I'll also add, and I thought Mr. Griffith did a good job, and I won't talk about the rate itself, but our debt per, per capita, which I think is the way you would look at something like our debt, is lower than Corpus Christi and Plano and Denton and Irving. People that we, and Arlington, people we compare ourselves to, particularly Corpus. It's also a little higher than Laredo, which is something we, someone we compare ourselves to, and certainly than Amarillo. We're just a little bit below the average of the 20 cities that we generally benchmark ourselves against. Once again, I think it's a good spot to be. That debt has been paid down by, even though we've issued new debt, which we will, we'll have to invest. But over the two, last year we're just finishing, and next year we'll pay that debt down by some $200 million, just shy of $200 million. Net decrease in that debt. The vast debt, the investments we've made in the last three years are at LPNL and will be repaid to us through transmission cost reimbursements through the P, as legislated by the P, or overseen by the PUC. And will come back to us through people using the lines we've invested in. And we'll get paid our rent for using those lines. In fact, it'll more than pay back what we've invested. That's a great, it's a very good budget. It's, it funds needs, not wants. It's five, it's the sixth budget, as Ms. Joy talked about how much she likes to pay cash and doesn't like to pay debt. We agree. It's six budgets in a row that focus on that. The master lease is gone. We don't finance desktop computers. We don't finance police vehicles. We pay cash for them. The vast majority of our public works projects, we pay cash for. I'm thankful for the work that's gone into this. The final comment I would make is I think it's good for our people. They're the ones that deliver the services that our citizens expect. Whether it's from the Buddy Holly Center to Lubbock Fire and Rescue. That's what our citizens expect. All our public service folks are important. We've gotten things much better at LPD this year. We'll continue to look at that, but we also have to look at Lubbock Fire and Rescue as we go forward. That's important to this council. I'm done. I don't have anything else. Ms. Joy.
Let's not forget the investment that, that we are making, and rightfully so, in public health. Where would we have been this past year if we had not had the public health leadership and staff that we had when COVID hit? And so some of our investment is in fact in those areas that are critical to the operation of this city and to the health of our citizens. And just one comment for Ms. Ward. She mentioned that the taxes that LITA and Market Lubbock utilize are paid by all the citizens. And you're correct about that. And I've already mentioned to Mr. Osborne that we need to focus more on the entire city in terms of use of those funds. Every project they do does help the entire city of Lubbock, whether you realize it or not. But I'm talking about utilizing those funds in areas other than those that they have focused on. I think they've been correct in what they've done in focusing, but it's time to move into other areas of the city. And he has promised me that that will happen, just not when. So, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. We have a motion by Mr. Chattis, a second by Mr. Christian, to approve the 2021, 2022 operating budget capital program on first reading. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, by that same sign. That motion carries seven to zero. We'll go now to item 2.4. Item 2.4 is on page 59. It's the first reading of an ordinance regarding the tax, setting the tax rate. This is related to the public hearing we had as item 2.2 today. I'll turn to Mr. Griffith for a motion on this. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. This must be read because of our state legislature exactly. This is a move that the property tax rate may be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.523230, which is effectively a 5.13% increase in the tax rate.
Thank you for that motion, Mr. Griffith. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Joy. Okay, counsel, open up the floor for discussion. Is there discussion on, on item, on item 2.4? Personally shot my bullets on this one, on the last one. Mr. Griffith.
I appreciate your comments on this. We still need to let everyone know that our tax rate that is proposed is shown by an increase is also a decrease of 1.83 cents.
Mr. Mayor, and the other part of that, and the reason that, that the average home would show an increase is based upon appraisal value, which is not determined by the city of Lubbock.
The way I do the math on that is that 1.83 cent reduction over last year's 54.1573 cents, that's a 3%, 3.3%, 3.4, if you want to round it up, percent decrease in the tax rate. rate.
Yes.
Now, that's Texas Tech math, Rawls College. I'm pretty sure it's right. Guess it depends on where we went to school. Okay. Any other comments on the tax rate? We have a motion and a second to approve the tax rate on the first reading. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by the same sign. That motion carries seven to zero. Okay, council, we'll now move to item two-five. We have a few things that we need to take care of. Excuse me.
Announcement?
Yes, I will. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I need to let her, thank you, Mr. Weaver. The city council will vote on the tax rate on the second and final reading at the September fourteen, twenty-twenty-one city council meeting in these very city council chambers, thirteen-fourteen Avenue K, beginning at five PM. That's next Tuesday night, if you want to set your clock, okay? Thank you for that reminder. Move now to item two-five. Item two-five are citizen comments. Citizens that would like to comment on other items on tonight's agenda, we'd like to invite you to come forward and do so at this time. Mr. Schenckles, you signed up to comment. I think, did you, did you, did you mean to comment in the public?
That was an error.
Okay, so I'll make sure. We have a, we had another citizen that did a written comment. I believe it probably applies to the budget, but because she's not here, I think it's appropriate that we have it read into the record. So I've asked Deputy City Secretary to do so.
Thank you, Mayor. This one is from Mary Harrington, sixteen-twenty-three, sixty-ninth Street. We have a large diverse population who resides outside Lubbock, who shops, works, seek services in Lubbock, using Lubbock roads, public services. They are guests who rely on residents to maintain their shopping sites and job sites without paying for maintenance. We need to tax these non-residents for help on maintaining Lubbock. A consumer tax would capture more than property taxes. People are buying, are busy consuming at Costco, Home Depot, Walmart, people who consume here but don't reside here. They are a higher number than Lubbock property owners. If they have an accident here, our EMT, police and fire attend to them. Our hospitals serve them. Tax consumption as well as property. Mary Harrington.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pass. Any other comments? Okay, we'll close the public, we'll close citizen comment period. We'll move to item two-six. Items two-six and two-seven are second readings from planning. I think we'll get a quick overview from Mr. Isom on these. Two-six is on page sixty-four, two-seven is on page eighty-three.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item two-point-six is case twenty-five-thirty-eight V. The applicant is AMD Engineering, representing the property owners listed here. The case is requested to go from R-one to R-one A. Here we have the subject site outlined in orange, generally located, sorry, south of Fourth Street and east of Upland Avenue. The staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request, and city council approved first reading by a vote of seven to zero.
Any questions on that one, council? Okay, let's go to two-seven, please. This is case twenty-nine-twenty-six E. It's on page eighty-three.
Item two-point-seven is case twenty-nine-twenty-six E for AMD Engineering, representing the applicants listed here. This case is a request to go from R-one to R-one A with specific use for garden homes, and is located, or the request is for properties at fifteen-oh-one to fifteen-oh-four, fifteen-oh-six, sorry, one-oh-five-oh-one to one-oh-five-oh-four, one-oh-five-oh-six, one-oh-five-oh-eight Troy Avenue, and one-oh-five-oh-one to one-oh-five-oh-eight Toledo Avenue. Here we have the subject site outlined in orange. It's generally located south of one-hundred-and-fifth Street and east of Vicksburg Avenue. Staff and Planning and Zoning Commission both recommended approval of this request, and the city council approved first reading by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Isom. Counsel, any questions on two-seven? Okay. I guess these past seven-zero previously, counsel, are you willing to consider these together? Mr., would you make a, Mr. Griffith, can I get a motion for you to begin consideration?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Move to approve item two-point-six and two-point-seven together.
Thank you. Appreciate that. That is our second. Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Got a motion to approve on second read items two-six and two-seven. Is there a discussion? All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same sign? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, we'll now move to item two-eight. It is on page one-oh-six. This is a first reading regarding some right-of-way work, and I believe that Josh Kristinek is gonna do this one for us tonight. Josh?
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members.
Good afternoon.
This is a first reading of an ordinance that will abandon and close portion of Seventh, Eighth, Ninth, and Tenth Street and Avenue B. This is close to the South Plains Fairgrounds. It butts up against Marshall Sharp Freeway and roughly Broadway, the interstate, Frontage Road, and Avenue A. The total value of the property assessed is fifty-nine thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents. We're only asking for fifty percent credit due to the city, which will be a value of twenty-nine thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and ninety-six cents to the general fund.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kristinek. Do you have a, do we have a map? Do we have a map, by chance, of this one?
I believe it should be in your agenda packet.
It's in our package, yeah.
Counsel, it's on page one-hundred-and-thirteen in the packet, and we'll have a map for your second reading.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody saw this, and so you could get a feel for this. I thought this had been done years ago. I'm glad to know that it's something we're looking at now. Ms. Patterson-Harris, do you have a question?
I do. This is Mr. Choddis's area, but I was just curious, as we do the abandoning, will we scrape those pieces? Will that be something that will come following that? Or help me understand what we would actually end up with at the end, if we know.
The, this process is actually going to allow the South Plains Fair to be able to use this property in the manner that best benefits their operations.
I didn't know if there had been some further communication as to what their plans might be, because all of those areas are actually streets that have been paved and all. So I was just curious as to if we may have had the inside scoop or something.
I bet we can get it.
As to what.
Bet we have two representatives here that might be able to.
John or Jennifer, one of you guys like to come up here and talk about this?
He was all masked up, but so I couldn't tell.
Well, after you've been in the hospital of COVID, you get masked up occasionally. We have, other than using it for parking, we have no other plans currently for this. That's what we're gonna do. So trying to get this done before this fair. Since last year, it was a tough fair because of COVID. But that's all we're planning to do. We have no other plans on it at this time, other than the fact that we'll open it all up, that we can use it, won't be restricted, where we can't park on streets, and it's been kind of a problem with all the other stuff we've done. Any other questions on that?
Questions for Mr. Zweiger?
That helps me understand. I just wanted to kind of know. Thank you.
Mr. Zweiger, before you leave, Ms. Joy's got a question for you.
Real quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What condition are those streets in?
Uh, pretty good. They're, they're better than a lot of them around town, but they have not been maintained for many years, to be honest. So it, and not all of this. There's some areas kind of north that we don't have, that there's a piece of property that we, the only piece of property that we haven't been able to buy out for the last twenty-something years that we've gone through this process. So we own all of this, other than, other than one small piece. In that part, we have not asked to have this issue brought up on that, to close those streets and alleys. Anything else?
I don't believe so. Thank you very much.
Really, thank you for everything else you do, by the way. You may not hear that very often from people.
We appreciate it.
Particularly companies that's been paying taxes for ninety-two years in our town. We really appreciate LITA and Market Lubbock, by the way.
Thank you, Mr. Zweiger. Okay. Counsel, further, further questions on this one? I don't think we have a motion, do we? Yeah, let's get a motion to begin consideration. Mr. Griffith, thank you for that motion, Mr. Griffith. Got a second from, from Ms. Joy here. Okay, is there further discussion, counsel, on item two-oh-eight, or two-eight?
I'm all in favor of this. I know South Plains Fair needs the space, and obviously the city no longer utilizes that area. So I'm all in favor of this.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Other comments? All right, we've got a motion to approve the first reading of item, this item, right-of-way item, item two-eight in today's agenda. All those in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same sign? The motion carries seven to zero. Okay, finally, we have two items, two, items two-nine and two-ten are related, the resolutions from public health. They're asking council to ratify some amendments to existing contracts that we've already executed. I'll get, Ms. Wells, are you gonna talk about these? Is that right? Or?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's get, let's get a quick description on these, if you don't mind, please, Catherine.
Both items two-nine and two-ten were part of the budget ordinance, budget amendments that we made at the last council meeting, and the paperwork did not get to us prior to that time. The first one is, or two-nine is an additional one-hundred-ninety-three-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars for surveillance. That will be used to support some of our current staff and also assist with the development or expanding our disease surveillance database. Item two-ten is actually a new grant with the Department of State Health Services, and it's to look at health disparities. And this will fund two projects. The first one will be a project that the Health Department's working with planning as part of the developing neighborhood plans. And the second project will allow us to expand LBK Community, which is our patient navigation network.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Questions for Catherine? Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I don't have a question, but I learned of the, the grant that will, you'll be working with the neighborhood planner with, on, last week, and I was really excited about it. I look forward to seeing the things that it can, can learn, and so that we can begin helping areas that are disproportionately impacted. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Anything else? Any other questions from Ms. Wells? Okay, thank you very much, Catherine.
Thank you.
So, counsel, if it pleases you, I'd open the floor for a motion to approve two-nine and two-ten collectively. Ms. Patterson-Harris?
My full approval.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Choddis. Is there a discussion on the motion to approve items two-nine and two-ten resolutions from Public Health Services, ratifying actions in amending existing contracts with State Department of Health Services? All those in favor of that motion, please indicate your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same sign? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, I believe that takes care of our business this evening. Mr. Weaver, Ms. Garza, you good? Okay. Counsel, thank you for your time today and for your, for your attention. Staff, thank you very much. Citizens that are here, we appreciate you. We'll see you again here, again next, next Tuesday. It's a great day in Lubbock, Texas, at six forty-seven, and we're adjourned.